Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Garden City Planning Commission. It's Thursday, December 9th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. To start out, if everyone would stand and say, "Pledge allegiance, please."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary take the roll call, please?
Chairperson May.
Here.
Commissioner Steenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Here.
Commissioner Walls. Commissioner Kalidus.
Here.
Commissioner Mativier.
Here.
Commissioner King.
Here.
Okay, now we need to approve the agenda for tonight. If someone would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any corrections or comments? Take your role, please.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier.
Aye.
Commissioner Kalidus.
Aye.
Commissioner Steenberg.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Next item is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of October 14th and the regular meeting of November 4th, 2021.
I make a motion, we approve the regular meeting, the minutes of the regular meeting from October 14th and November 4th.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any corrections or comments? During none, take your role, please.
Commissioner Kalidus.
Aye.
Commissioner Steenberg.
Aye.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier.
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Public comments on non-agenda items only. Does anyone wish to comment on a non-agenda item tonight? Seeing no one, we'll move on. To our business items. First item is zoning ordinance amendments. Discussion of draft zoning amendments relating to the O-1 district, mixed-use districts, smoking use standards, and licensed massage therapy. Mr. Ortega, would you like to start us off?
Yes, good evening, everyone. So tonight, we're just here to review some final changes requested after our last discussion for these bundle of zoning amendments. If you recall, we began with a list of different amendments, and we've been going over these preferred initial amendments that were, we thought were issues that we could deal with in 2021. So before you tonight, Amendment 1, which is where we are eliminating the O-1 district and combining them with the, we're eliminating the O-1 district because all the uses permitted in the O-1 already allowed in the C-1. So before you is what you've seen before, nothing has changed in Amendment 1. This is just going through our existing language and getting rid of all references to the O-1 district. And once again, this is something that is consistent with the, one of the objectives of the master plan, just to simplify things. And also, it will open up more opportunities for property owners with O-1 property to consider some other service or retail uses on, because they would be then Zone C-1. So that's, that's everything from page 1 to 7. Nothing has changed since you previously looked at it. Beginning on page 8, the Second Amendment, which is the creation of a new mixed-use overlay district. If you recall, this is where you would, it's a permissive district that should a property owner that's zoned in a certain location as defined by the ordinance would be allowed to consider residential uses on their property in addition to the existing. However, at our last meeting that we were all together, you mentioned it would be appropriate to limit this on, or not allow this type of mixed use on certain uses. So at the, beginning with, in page paragraph 1 on the bottom, the underlying text states, you know, "Any property which is currently occupied or proposed to be occupied by any of the following uses shall not be permitted to establish another, another use on the property." So that being automobile, all these are vehicle-oriented. So automobile, vehicle sales, repair and filling stations, meaning gas stations, car rentals, car washes, and then on the next page, drive-ins, fast foods, and regulated uses.
Yeah, and in addition to that, after reading over it, I would like to, in the third paragraph down where it says, in the first sentence, "District that overlays all of the zoning districts," I would like to limit that to C-1 and C-2 only. I think that would be more appropriate, and then it won't run into problems in the future.
Sure. So then that might...
It might take care of some of the things down below, but we could, you could leave that there anyway.
Right, that's true. So forgive me, Fred, where were you thinking that we should put that?
Ah, it's the paragraph that starts with overlay, overlay district established.
Yes.
It's in the first sentence, it says, "District that overlays," right now it says, "all of the zoning districts." And if we could change that wording to only C-1 and C-2 districts would be allowed.
Yeah, I can make that change if everyone, yeah, that makes sense, it makes it a little bit, but also alleviates some of those issues that might cause conflicts of residential uses on the C-3 properties.
Yeah. And it eliminates people considering business uses, I think, in some other districts that aren't intended for business. That was the only additional change I had. It was just that wording.
Okay.
So anyone else have anything on that, Mike?
Yeah, right on page 1 where we talk about Amendment 3 being revised to establish a thousand-foot setback between cigar lounges. Do you think it would be better to cluster them like we're doing with our grow operations in, in more of a central area rather than spread them out mixed in with other areas?
Well, it might be a little difficult to do that from a organizational procedural method because we'd have to basically establish another overlay for that. We were trying to cluster them in a location. I mean, in theory, we could say something like the fact they shall be within X feet of like, say, a certain intersection. So if you chose a particular intersection and they're along, you know, either east-west or north-south of that intersection as a possibility. I guess the only thing I would say is that right now, the way we deal, and now this isn't a regulated use, but you know, it's kind of teetering on that, that regulated use characteristic because remember, if you remember, our regulated uses are liquor stores, the tattoo parlors, smoke shops. Those places are regulated uses, they're only allowed in the C-3, but then they have to be, no more than two can be within a thousand feet of each other. So we treat regulated uses as a means of spreading them out amongst the C-3 district to, to not create a particular concentration. But that's the way, the procedure you're doing right now, and that's not to say that's the only way to go, because other communities do limit them to a certain location and only one location in the community. I would just say that right now, you know, if, I mean, in theory, you could start doing that with the cigar lounges, but it, but right now, historically, the city has been kind of trying to spread them out to make sure they're not in one location.
Well...
Sounds to me like it's, it's more like you're creating a red light district for cigar lounges or something, you know?
Well, my thought really was more by eliminating the thousand-foot, we could not necessarily establish one area where they're all gonna be, but take, for instance, we could have a smoke shop, we could have a hookah lounge, and then we could have a cigar lounge, and they could, without this prohibition there, they could conceivably all be in a similar strip mall. Not necessarily exclusively, but a smoke shop would kind of go hand in hand. I mean, it's not something that I would be using, but for somebody that might be in a smoke shop buying discounted tobacco products, having a hookah lounge and a cigar lounge, if, if there were proprietors that wanted to locate there and there were storefronts available, I, I kind of hate to restrict that by the thousand-foot prohibition here because they kind of seem like they would feed off of one another, you know?
Well, actually, that particular situation you're, you're postulating could actually work because provided there are no other regulated uses, because of that situation, the cigar lounge isn't a regulated use, it's just a special use in the C-3. So it would, it would be the only cigar lounge in, say, the same strip mall. But then when it comes to the smoke shop and the hookah lounge, hookah club, excuse me, the, the, those two could be located within each other, but then there couldn't be a third. So it's that third use that, that triggers the separation. So that's the way that the regulated uses are attempting to not create a, a red light or a concentration. It's like, right, you can let the first two go into there, but if a third one wants to come in, then you tell them, "No, you have to be a thousand feet away from these guys." So that's what that use, so that would, that would qualify for also for a tattoo parlor, or excuse me, not a tattoo parlor, but a, like a, like a, a bar or another type of regulated use. So it could still work.
I think that, that approach, I think, has worked well for regulated uses, and I think it would continue to work well for this, too.
And I definitely could see, because I can, as thinking of our existing locations of our uses, I don't know of one location in which they're, they are in the same strip mall.
Burn Dale, Dearborn, Ann Arbor.
No, no, I'm sorry, I meant in, in our, in the city, I don't think of any ones right now that are like that. So in theory, that could still happen. So that's what I'm saying, is like, that probability could occur, but once again, it would, it, our regulations are such that you couldn't have that third, or in this case, fourth use. You could have the cigar lounge, the hookah club, and the smoking, one of each, but the second, somebody else wants to join the party, they'll have to be like, "No, no, you have to go a thousand feet somewhere else." At least that's the way it is right now. If you wanted to change that, we would have to revise the, the strategy right now.
Yeah, I don't know for big enough for that synergy to happen here, but I'd kind of hate to restrict it because I've seen it in other places with a, with a number of different things. And when you say red light district, we all know what, what that means, but that kind of carries a malconnotation, and I mean, there's areas like in Tennessee, in, in Nashville, and in Austin, where when you go down to a particular area, it's one club after another, and they all have live music, and there's a synergy there. People know, "I want live music, I'm not sure what I'm in the mood for, but I know I can go to this area and just park anywhere and walk two blocks and get every kind of music under the sun." And that synergy is kind of cool, and it exists in larger areas, I don't know if it could exist here, but I'd kind of hate to prohibit it, you know?
Well, once again, I don't think right now that we would prohibit that situation. Once again, we would only be having a situation where a fourth user would come in, for lack of a better word. So like, when the, the cigar lounge and the smoke shop and the hookah club could all coexist in a, in a tenant space, but when a fourth, like a fourth one wants to come in, they would then have to move a thousand feet away. And I guess the only thing about that, too, is it kind of makes sense only in terms of making sure that the level of activity of those businesses doesn't negatively impact the single-family residential that are usually pretty close to our commercial properties. But I don't think it would be prohibited. It'd just be, you know, spread out in different locations, and I think that's what you also wanted to try and do, because actually, whenever anybody comes in and tries to locate these type of uses, I tell them, "You go on the east side, on 4th Road, on the east over near Inkster, because that's our C-3, you can go on the west over near Vanoy, because that's our C-3, go up to Warren, and, you know, on Warren and, and Middlebelt." So we kind of have a good distribution, and I, once again, I don't think they could be prohibited from doing it.
Currently, is a, a complete smoke shop allowed with a cigar lounge? Would that, because my, my thought is JR and, on Northwest, Northwestern Highway and, I guess that's Southfield, they have both under one roof. And I'm not sure if that same condition exists with the cigar shop on Plymouth Road west of Middlebelt. It's a, it's a two-story building, it's primarily a liquor store, but they have all kinds of brewing equipment for beer-making and wine, they also have walk-in humidors, and I'm not sure if you can smoke the product in there or not, but they have, their synergy is liquor store, wine-making equipment, beer-making equipment, walk-in cigar humidor, and exotic tobaccos for pipe smokers and stuff, and that's all under one roof. Could that exist here?
That could, in terms of the liquor and the tobacco, for the tobacco and the smoke products, if more than 50% of the floor area is used for those products, then it is a smoke shop, so they would just have to be, once again, not the third location and close, and within a thousand feet of, of another one. The liquor would just have to get their liquor license, and I do believe that those are, could be coexist in same building, but there's nothing in the local ordinance against that, and there's not, and I, based on my experience, that's not something prohibited by the state, they just have to get the appropriate licenses, they have to get the, the tax license for those tobacco, and then they have to get the liquor license from, you know, Liquor Control Commission. And then for the smoking lounge, like cigar lounge, excuse me, they could, our ordinance wouldn't prohibit that, but they would have to, based on these definitions, because once again, we're revising the definitions to line up with the state's regulations, then we would just have to make sure if there going to be a cigar lounge, they get just the cigar lounge exemption from, from the state. So they would have to have each of those three in hand, but I could see those working together within, within the same site and possibly even within the same storefront because the state would control how they interact. The key thing with the cigar lounge is going to be the air handling and how they meet those requirements. And so, you know, whether they do the air handling in the entire building and so that you can walk the sales floor and smoke or not, I have no idea, that's all up to the state, and they would tell us whether they could, or they would tell us, "No, you have to have a wall in a separate room, and the separate room is where they can do the smoking, and then the other room is there." I don't know. I think places like Wild Bill's and those, they, they let, they can smoke in there and they don't have like a official separation. So I think just as long as they get their site licenses, they could, they could do it.
Okay.
It's not prohibited.
Are, are we through with the previous section, the mixed use?
Yeah, I mean, other than, and then the revision that you had.
Okay.
Fred?
Okay.
Yeah, so, and we have been talking about a 3, and so Amendment 3 is just formalizing our definitions so that there is a distinction between a hookah club, which is different hours of operation, and a different license than a cigar lounge, and so separates that out and keeps those different types of establishments. And right now, the proposed language on page 12 would, as far as I reading you guys, would remain with the 1,000-foot requirement. Once again, this is still draft, you know, at the conclusion of this, well, if you would like to, you schedule a public hearing, and then we can see what the public says before you consider sending it to council, so. So Amendment 4, that hasn't changed. Amendment 4 is just, once again, revising our language to be more consistent with the state statute and specifically cite the licenses that are required for therapeutic massage, defining that, what services can be performed in a regular retail establishment with a license, and what type of establishments are regulated uses that are own, that are, have to go through that process to be, to become established in the city. So there's nothing changed there. So then the final thing for you tonight, Amendment 5, it, forgive me, the, the heading is wrong, it shouldn't be about, previously talked about places of assembly, but this is regarding, in the central business district, our canopy and awning regulations. Because recently, a, we were having some discussions about someone that would, if they wanted to have a drive-through canopy, our terminology was getting confused because in the current ordinance, there's a distinction between an awning and a canopy, and, you know, there was nothing specific in the language about whether it was for pedestrians or whether it also, a canopy was also the roof-type structure that protects a car in a drive-through. So the idea was to combine, right now, in front of you, this language would, beginning on page, you know, bottom 16, and then 17, combine the canopy-awning definition, because right now, the only way it defines the difference really is that a canopy is a, right now is defined as a roof-like structure made of metal, and the awning is a roof-like structure made of an opaque canvas or material stretched over a support. I'm sorry.
No, to interject at this point, when I was studying for my contractor's license, the distinction they drawed on those two items, an awning is anything that's connected to a building that shields in some fashion a window. It could be opaque, translucent, it could be canvas metal, it could be concrete. A canopy, on the other hand, was freestanding. It did not rely on its structure to be connected to a building. It could be, but it did not rely on that. So it, it could be right next to the building, like a drive-through at a bank, and not even be connected to the building.
Right.
That's how they split those two terms. Go ahead.
So that is interesting. The one thing, I guess the way I approached this, the proposed revision, was the idea, once again, of a distinction of what are the roof-like structures that are over windows and over sidewalks and have, you know, some cover for pedestrians versus the type of structure that is supposed to be a coverage for someone in a vehicle? Because, you know, we have, for example, the credit union in the, in the Planet Fitness Plaza that has a, has a roof-like structure, sometimes, you know, drive-through canopy and everything. And so that's why I think we were getting this terminology a little confused, and this is an attempt to clarify that, by just, at least in, in our design standards, because these are design standards in the central business district, say, whether it's an awning, whether it's a canopy, that's something that is, so it's really the definition. An architectural feature or roof-like structure directly attached to a building which may shade a window or door opening or provide pedestrian protection from the weather. Canopy-awning may be fixed architectural element or constructed to be raised and retracted, and is typically located over a sidewalk. So the, the intent there being it's more pedestrian-oriented. And then the idea to create a new classification or new element, and I was looking around for other terminology, and some of the other, I hadn't heard of it before too much, but apparently another term is you call it a port-coche. It's a fancy way to call a canopy. I mean, I was, if you don't like that term, we can call it a drive-through canopy, we can, I'm not married to that term, that was just something I found through Google, and like, I think it's an architectural-type feature. You know, architects know that more than, than us. But really, the idea was just to, once again, create a different type of element, architectural building element that would specifically be for the protection of vehicles. So the last, so on page 20, just the idea that, and these would only be permitted on the side or rear of buildings in the downtown, so not in the front. So we wouldn't have any kind of drive-through situation or any kind of drop-off situation in the front of a building, because in the downtown, we do want to have buildings as close to the street as possible, we want to emphasize that pedestrian interaction as much as possible. So these would only be permitted on the side or rear of a building, and, and it kind of goes into what you were talking about, Mike, because it's, port-coche shall be considered a component of the principal structure and be subject to all setback requirements of the principal structure. Port-coche shall be consistent with the architectural style of the building. So whether it's a physically attached to the building, or whether it's a freestanding structure like with a six-inch gap or whatever it is, just because, it would still be set, required to meet the setback requirements of the principal building. And that's the same thing we do with any kind of porch on a residential structure in other building. And then obvious things, but we need to put them in the ordinance, such as, the port-coche shall be located on private property and shall not project into any right-of-way, you know, that any of these would have to be located only on private property. They have to comply with our lighting standards, because similar to any kind of gas station overhead canopy, they sometimes tend to have excessive amount of lighting, so just wanted to emphasize they have to comply with lighting and not negatively impact any adjacent residents. And then, and, and also with signage, just making sure that any port, any port-coche or drive-through canopy isn't an attempt to have additional signage, they, they would still be subject to the same signage, building mounted signage requirements of the, of the principal building. So just because there are two, even if they were separated with that six-inch thing, it's "Oh, no, that's my separate building," it doesn't matter, but it would measure the whole width from one end to the other, including if there's a port, if a drive-through canopy, port-coche on it, and that sort of thing. So it was just something that, you know, I think, it's a, it's an issue that sometimes happens when language has been around for a while. Obviously, the original drafters of the ordinance probably knew in their head what the difference between an awning and canopy was versus, you know, a car canopy, but there, you know, the pictures they chose, all of the awnings and canopies pictures show them over, you know, pedestrians or a sidewalk. So when someone was asking, "Well, what if I wanted to have a car pull up to the side of my building, have something covering the canopy so I could have someone get out in inclement weather and enter the business?" You know, there's like, "Well, yeah, technically, we don't define that," and they were getting confused by this language. So it was just an idea to clarify, so I don't know what your thoughts are, if it, might be the water, or if it makes it clear?
Personally, I, I think it's a good idea to define it. I think we should make sure our definitions are correct, and maybe if we just go with the standard dictionary definition of those terms, that would be a, a safe bet. But as they stand, I don't, I don't see a problem with them, and we have a lot of these port-coches in town now. We have bank drive-throughs, we have drugstore drive-throughs, there may be some other businesses that would want to have that, too, but it definitely poses a slightly different situation than a canopy or an awning. So I, I don't see a problem with any of that personally. Anyone else have any comments on these?
So those are the amendments as they are, that they change I can make to the mixed-use overlay. And then it's up to you if you'd like to schedule a public hearing for the next meeting, or how you would want to proceed.
Yeah, I think we could do that. And you can, before that, you can check the definitions on the awnings, canopies, and port-coche.
Yep.
Okay. So if there's a change needed for that, then you could go ahead and make that change.
Yep.
Any other questions on any of the amendments? Someone like to make a motion to schedule a public hearing?
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for January.
I'll second.
At our regular meeting? And Mike, you seconded?
Yeah.
Any comments or questions on the motion? Go ahead and take the roll, please.
Commissioner Kalivas?
Aye.
Commissioner Steenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner King?
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier?
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Aye.
Chairperson May?
Okay, I assume everyone has a meeting schedule? This is just to assure that everyone received one. Next order of business would be Planning Commission election of officers for 2022. Floor is open to nominations. I guess we can start with chairman. Mike?
I nominate you.
I second that.
Okay, I accept nomination. Want to go ahead and nominate the other two before we vote? We need the vice chair.
I nominate Mike Steenberg.
Mike?
King.
Is there a second?
I second.
And you accept?
Yes.
Okay. And we need, also need a secretary, correct?
Yes. Yep.
I nominate Diane.
Second that.
Diane?
I accept.
Very good. Are there any other nominations?
Nope, so those are three positions. So we've got nominations and seconds for each. So unless there's any objections, we can just do a yea or nay, you know, on, these are our officers for the 2022.
All in favor of the nominations as they stand? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, I guess we're all appointed.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Do we have any comments regarding planning and zoning matters from the commissioners? Starting with Diane?
Not at this time.
Mike?
Somebody remind me what the Old Moose Hall is becoming. They've been working a lot on it lately. They waited until the weather got real cold, and now they're working like crazy on it.
Yeah. Originally, it was going to be a cigar lounge and food hall. They have a floor plan around the east side of the building. There would be food stands, and then there would be a common eating area. And they, they've since modified their proposal from a cigar lounge to now be an MMA cage-fighting theater. So they would have that MMA style of fighting. And technically, because we allow theaters in the downtown, it's a permitted use.
Is that really considered theater?
They, yeah. We were going on and on about it, you know, based on the definitions and because it was a central location where a performance would be held and surrounded by seating, you know, it might be a stretch, but it, but it's, there's no specific definition in the ordinances for whether it's a movie theater, a theater that performs plays or musicals or that sort of thing, so.
It qualifies.
Yeah, kind of a stretch.
I bet that'll be a draw.
And apparently, someone told me that at one point, that building did have, like, a cage fight in there?
Yeah, that's what I heard, but I wasn't aware of it.
Neither was I, but apparently, at one point in time, the Moose Club did put in, like, I don't know what I, I'm envisioning in my head chain-link fence, but, you know, they said they put it above and on the side, and for a little while, they had fights in there. Before this whole thing.
Do they have parking for that kind of theater?
So ever since I started my initial conversations with this gentleman, I've told him, you know, he want, he envisions X number of people. I said, "You need to have parking, you need to find parking. These are ordinances, you can't count parking on the north side of Ford, you can't count parking on the west side of Middlebelt." He's attempted to go up and down that block to get additional parking, and he hasn't. So right now, he's limited, his capacity is going to be limited to what his parking can be on the site. It's something where, you know, I think we might have to rethink that policy, because, you know, if the, if the capacity in the building is limited to either the parking or the fire code standard, and I work with the fire marshal to try and determine, like, what, which is more restrictive, because it would be whichever is more restrictive. And in this case, the applicant has said, "I'm going to restrict myself to only X number of people." I think in that, based on the number of parking spaces behind there, I want to say it's 100 people. I can't recall off the top of my head. I want to say that they fit thirty-five parking spaces. Yeah, he thinks he wants more. You know, it's one of those things, we always want to try and work with the business. They're ambitious, you know, if you wanted more, you know, it's going to become, it could become an issue. But at the same time, if they restrict it, then it does become an enforcement issue. So I don't know if we want to get to the point of saying, go the, shift to the other side and say, you know, we, you know, you're going to be exceeding this, so therefore, you're not even permitted, so not even allow them to begin.
My recollection of that building, going way back, was that it started out life as a furniture store. Does anybody remember anything that preceded it? Yeah, and it's got a second floor, but only in the back half with runways running up each side.
That's correct, and so.
So for what they're proposing, it would be very ideal for that, but they better.
Yeah, they wanted to have the fans up above.
Make sure they got very robust railings, because they get pretty crazy at those events.
Yep.
My other question was, that's good, I didn't know that. Do we have any new things in the offing that you've heard of that may not be on paper yet?
Not so much on paper, because there actually is something on paper that will be, before you next month, at the northeast corner of Ford Road in Cardwell, so a block east of Town and Country, is currently, there's, it's a large lot. There's one building, probably maybe 2,000 square foot, if you're lucky. It's a hair salon. Applicant is proposing to put a multi-tenant storefront, so a strip mall on there. And he's proposing it to be a zero-lot line along Ford and have parking in the rear. And have a brick around the outside, so even though this is not in the CBD, he's proposing brick. And so it's, be a multi-tenant building, straight commercial residential. It's Zone C3 right there, so they can have C3-type uses. And they have a decent amount of parking, but, you know, I worked with them in terms of letting them know, you know, your tenant mix, you're going to have to work on, because if people try to put multiple restaurants in there, at some point, the parking's not going to handle it, and then they're going to be restricted to only office uses. But it's a, it's a situation that's in multiple locations in the city for the parking. But he understands, the property owner understands it, he's willing to moderate the uses as proposed. So it's a straight and brand-new construction, so he'll be.
And the hair salon, it's still currently operating, I think, isn't it?
I've never seen it.
I don't go there, but it looks like it's active.
Okay. During the day, it doesn't seem that way, but.
That's all, thank you.
Right?
I have a question, just on the old videotape store on the south side of Ford Road. I can't remember the cross street. They painted it black?
Oh, yes.
Photo of them?
Yeah, that's right.
Shotka.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So that building, actually, is Zone C2. And apparently, and I didn't think this either, but apparently, it was still occupied by the previous property owner. He had a contractor's office or something, not an office.
They also had a furnace repair business.
Is that what it was?
Yeah.
Okay.
In the back, they had the photo place in the front and the furnace business in the back.
Okay.
And apartments up above.
Correct. Exactly. So according to the property owner, they still had renting out those apartments. It got to the point where all the apartments were, only one apartment was being rented out to the furnace owner, the furnace shop owner. And I didn't think it was occupied, but it was. And so a new person bought the building, and so they just did the facade renovations. And because it's, they had continual tenants, and then he says it hasn't been vacant for more than six months, he can continue with the residential uses in the building. I actually talked to him about our overlay district. I told him, you know, because my initial impression was that it was vacant. I said, "Since you're vacant, you know, if you wait a little bit, you might be able to create this with our new overlay district in the future sometime next year." And he's like, "Well, I have a tenant in there still." So they, they have their legal nonconformity. So they can't, they can refurbish the building, but they can't do any additions right now. In the future, if we, if this overlay district gets passed, then they can look into doing any additions based on, you know, compliance with the standards. But of course, the issue there is, they only, they own the building, and then about 60 to 65 feet west of the building is where their property ends, because then that begins the Knights of, is it, was that Knights of Columbus?
That used to be.
Formerly is.
Yeah, the former Knights of Columbus site is a different piece of property that they currently don't own.
Right.
So the amount of expansion that building could do currently is going to be very limited, because they need enough parking for all the apartments. So I don't envision them doing any addition unless they acquire the Knights of Columbus property.
And what the previous, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, what kind of business is going in there?
They're just refurbishing the building, making it, they have a CBO permit for a white box, meaning they're going to get it ready to be a leasable space. And that's why there's a sign out in front right now that says "For Lease." So they're going to make it available. So that's what we do. A business, a building must either be occupied by a business, have a CBO for a white box, or listed on our vacant registry. So that way, we know the status of each building. And so they have a CBO for a, for a white box.
Thank you. That's all I have.
I don't have any.
Randy, nothing? Eric? Brian?
No.
Mayor?
Eric, did you have anything?
I just appreciate everything you guys do.
Thank you. Always good to see you. Mario, did you have anything else?
No, nothing else at this time.
Okay, well, next regular Planning Commission meeting is Thursday, January 13, 2022. And if there's no other business, so except motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
Well, everyone have a happy holiday.
Yes.